So Project Anthem is the first data center in the entire city excluding Project Clydesdale. And as I told Commissioner Saleh, I said, you guys really put me on the hot seat when you approved that data center because now you have everybody coming out of the woodwork, you know, creating all this speculation about eco-challenges, right? Is it an open or closed-loop cooling system, right? Are they injecting chemicals to prevent corrosion? Is that being injected back into the system? And what potential pollutants are in that water?
He's always been, Chris has always been very good about responding anytime that I call or have a question or anything like that. And so I just thought that we needed to hear, number one, I want to hear about the meeting that went on and how you guys just sent it back to him and said, oh, uh-uh, not today, you know? But we're going to let Chris have the floor. If you guys have questions, raise your hand. Do you have a microphone for me? Because I think it's important because it may have gone away, but it's not, it's not far away.
It's not dead.
No, it's not. It's going to keep coming back. So let's learn how to fight it. So please join me in welcoming Chris Bingle.
Thank you. So first, thank you for having me, Rhonda, and thank you all for being here on a Thursday night. And I apologize, this is not normally how I would dress, but obviously Rhonda was digging the bottom of the barrel if she asked me to be here, right? So thank you first for having me. And like I said, don't think my appearance is any indication of how unimportant I might think you are because you're not.
I think you were.
You're not unimportant. I know you have, Bob. So first off, I want to tell you, I served 12 years in the military. I was a county deputy for 17 years, so I know what service to your country and your community means. So I see this as a distinct privilege on my part to be able to serve the citizens of Tulsa and advocate for my district at the same time. And I think that's really how I look at being a counselor in the city of Tulsa. Most people are more parochial in that view and approach, and that's really what they're mainly focused on, but I do recognize that I represent the city as a whole. And so I need to look at things objectively and how that might represent the whole. How many of you from District 6? Okay, thank God. The first time I've ever come spoken at an event and somebody from my district was here. So thank you for making the trek all the way from East Tulsa. So I think it's important to understand, you know, the challenges of being a counselor and the nuances that are associated with it. Most folks think it's just showing up on a Wednesday night or Wednesday morning and going through a series of meetings. I got to tell you, it is the biggest challenge I've had, even serving in the military or even serving as a deputy. This is literally the most challenging job I've ever had. Most people don't realize when you go through elections, you don't get that R and D advantage when you're doing straight party voting. So as Rhonda kind of alluded to earlier, when you're talking about elections and when Alina goes through this process, conservatives aren't going to get you elected. And that's what most people need to realize when you're running for some of these positions, conservatives are not going to be the ones who show up at the ballot every time. And if you understand and you look through the voter base, the state voter base, and you understand who your voters are and you see how long it's been since they've last voted, you realize that you have to appeal to a broader audience. And sometimes it looks different from the outside than the inside. And I, obviously, everybody here loves our congressman, right? If you don't, raise your hand so I can report you to him. Everybody loves Congressman Hearn. He's very conservative and he has endorsed me every single time I've run. Matt Pennell, everybody knows Matt Pennell. Matt Pennell and I just a couple of weeks ago spent Saturday evening watching FC Tulsa play. Matt and I have conversations, Congressman Hearn and I have conversations. And I will tell you, when Counselor Bellis was running her Human Rights ordinance, nobody called me, right? I think you might remember the controversy in the paper where there was supposedly some federal input on, and calls to counselors, right, specifically. I never got a call. And the reason why is I was always straightforward and transparent to my colleague that I couldn't support it. I didn't care what form it came in. I was already a no, no matter how it came to us. But what I will say is that because Counselors Bush and Counselor Gilbert were willing to step in that role, right, I wasn't willing to work on that. I'll just say that upfront. And I've always said that and I've always been transparent about that. And so nobody's tried to push me in that direction. And I want people to be respectful of my views and my values and my Christian beliefs. And I'm not going to have anybody trample me in that regard. So when that did come about and Counselors Bush and Counselor Gilbert were working on that, I said, I'm not going to leave you on an island to yourself. I'm not going to leave you out there to stand and to take the slings and arrows from the public. So if you feel like this is the best course we need to take after you've worked on this, I will support you 100%. And I feel like that's what you have to do for conservatives. I will tell you as a counselor, I'm troubled still, even to this day, by the splinter of our party. We have different factions doing different things, this one talking about this one. Social media is insane. You have people out here destroying other Republicans for what reason? I can't grasp it. It really, I'm going to use some harsh language, it really pisses me off. Why would you purposefully attempt to destroy somebody else? Especially when you're out here spreading disinformation and you're saying things that are totally untrue or you're only telling half-trues, right? I take issue with that. If you're going to say something about somebody, at least have the full facts. And I think you guys have seen us, we came to the women's club, we went to the men's club, and all of us conservatives sat and answered whatever questions were posed in front of us, including the sanctuary city claims, you know, the international flights from Tulsa, you know, all these conspiracies that we see in social media. And I'm going to tell you, like Rhonda was sitting here saying, most of people in our age group are looking at Facebook. I don't look at any of it because it's just toxic. And I'm being very honest with you. I don't post except on my counselor page to give out information. You just can't stand social media. I don't care what platform it is because that's all it is. It's just hate and it's toxic and I just don't want any part of it. If you don't like me, fine. Don't vote for me, primary me, I don't give a damn. I don't serve under the guise of self-preservation. I do what I feel is right and I can articulate my decisions and my votes and I take full responsibility for every single one of them. So that's about me. Now let me get to the part where we're talking about the taxes. So the way this was proposed to us, this wasn't proposed to us in a collective as a council. So we'll be transparent about that. When the mayor told us about this, it was kind of in what a former counselor would call serial meetings. And really, that's really what you kind of want to do. You don't want to broadcast things openly, right? Because you really want to kind of get a feel, like when we were talking about partisan elections. I think if you all heard me or saw in the Tulsa World, I had said, I'm open to going back to partisan elections. I'm okay with that. But let me put, let me put the caveat to that. But you have to go to each of your individual counselors that you work with. You have to go to your colleagues and see if there's even an appetite to make that charter amendment or to put it to a vote, just like the mayor having to go through this process to put a tax increase to a vote. You have to have support of your colleagues in order to put that to a vote or put it on a ballot. And I'll be honest with you, I have very little appetite within the council to put that to a charter vote. Yes, ma'am?
So even if there's initiative with the proper amount of signatures, that still happens?
Nope, that's totally different. That's a totally different process. This would allow us as a collective body by consensus to put that to a charter or to put that to a ballot. And that's why I said, this is where a lot of people need to understand. When I was talking about Congressman Hearn earlier, one of the great privileges that I have is some events that I get to go to, like going to legislative forums. If you got to go to the last legislative forum that Congressman Hearn was at, he talked about relationships with your counterparts. So when I say counterparts, AOC came out of his mouth. And I want to tell you, I, after hearing Congressman Hearn speak about how, even though you may not politically align with your opponent, you still have to work with them. And the only way you're going to get support for some of the things that you want to do is by forming those relationships, not coming in adversarial and just being oppositional to everything that they, that they may propose. Now, there are certain things I'm just not open to and my colleagues are aware of that. But I'm very rational, I'm objective, and you do have to compromise. We all know that. Even Alina knows that. You have to compromise in some things. There are some things I'm not willing to compromise on. So anyway, going back to the mayor and his proposal, the thing is, is that we met with the mayor. I met with the mayor individually. I had a breakfast, a standing breakfast with him in my district at IHOP. So if you happen to show up tomorrow, sir, at about 8 o'clock, you might find us there. So I had another meeting scheduled at 3:00. I didn't know what the topic was, but he said, hey, can we just combine these two meetings? And so at that meeting and that breakfast, that's usually our gab session, that's where I found out the initial proposal discussion. So this would have been about a month ago that I knew about the potential of it. Now, I didn't have any documentation. They didn't have anything to spell out how he planned to implement this or what his plan was to go about getting public support for it. But I did express my challenges to it. And I expressed them specifically. This is where I, as an individual counselor, only can look at my district and how my voters would look at it. How the rest of the city would look at it in specific districts? And if you're from these two districts, please take this in context. So if you're from 7, 8, or 9, right, that just may mean you don't get Starbucks one morning, right? But in some other portions of the city, that's a struggle. That $7, $8, $9, $10 is a struggle for a person on a fixed income. And so if I were to support this to go to a ballot, I need to be able to articulate why it's a great idea and why they need to dig back into their pocket to create an $80 million general fund increase. After that initial meeting, I then had another meeting, this time with Counselor Carol Bush, myself, the mayor, and some of his staff. And we got a spreadsheet with some of his proposed use of funds in that $80 million initial outlay. And I was a bit challenged by some of this stuff. Now, I will tell you, when you hear about IOT 3, now some of you may remember, I supported the package and there's a reason why. And if I need to refresh your memory, I want to explain why real quick.
You might want to explain what IOT is.
Okay, so IOT 3 is the third iteration of Improve Our Tulsa. IOT 2, the previous iteration, was a street-heavy package that, you know, the counselors advocated for their specific districts in improvement of streets, right? So we're still going through that process of getting those projects done. IOT 3, I coined it as a neglect package because that's really what it was. What we were doing is paying for previous generations and councils and governments' failure to maintain things, maintain the assets that they built at the taxpayers' expense initially. So the courts, municipal courts and police building, if you saw that video when we did these tours, you will see that that's a very substandard building. There's mold, there's leakage. You go up to the police chief's office and literally, when you turn that water on and the mayor showed the bottle of water, it is brown. It does not change. It's not like, yeah, you've got to let it run a couple of minutes and it goes clear. It literally is brown the entire time. So that building has to go. And there is a understanding about the cost of rehabilitation versus a new build, right? And what you can just defer, right? There's nothing on this that can be deferred. Bob knows this. Anybody that understands, some of the buildings just have not been maintained for decades. I worked for the city of Tulsa from 1994 to 2000. The fire department, the academy, the garage is all in the same facilities that it was when I worked for the city. And here we are 30 years later. They're terrible. These are substandard conditions. And so we need to protect our assets and we need to put our first responders in appropriate facilities. Now, that brings us to the Public Safety Center in East Tulsa. So I want to make sure, because I know a former counselor has been out here kind of smearing people, his former colleagues, about this issue. So I want to make sure people understand, there were only a few select areas where this could have potentially went, right? And I want people to understand, if you look at some of the architecture and some of the buildings that have been built downtown, they were built in a different era. They were built with different money and a different economy. You could not build those today. Bob, I want you to validate that.
Absolutely.
You could not build those buildings today. So I want people to understand, if you ever went by where the old State Farm headquarters is, you will see how vast that building is. Now, I went through that building. Now, the person who's out here claiming that they're much smarter than the rest of us didn't tour that building. As a matter of fact, they just didn't participate in the process. And so the thing is, is that building today, if you had to build that building that we got for $25 million, right? If you had to build that building today, it would cost you over $200 million. Again, validation.
That's correct. I'd walk that building.
That's correct. And it is pristine. Am I wrong?
Absolutely.
So what changed the problem for us, and as I stated in my Facebook post in counter to this individual's claims, was did we know at the time when we were buying this building, because we designated it as a public safety center, that we would be required to make additional investments in it to bring it up to code in a different way? Because as I stated clearly in committee, this was sold to us as a turnkey operation. That's exactly how it was sold to us. We all toured the building. We all went through the ceremony of Mayor Bynum turning the keys over to both the fire chief and the police chief, if anybody remembers that. And so here we are, next year after a new administration, and we come to the table and we're told, hey, we have to make these improvements to the building in order to make this, or to make this facility safe. And so my anger is not only should we have known this, I don't know that. I don't know if the code changed. I found out it was actually 2023 that this came into effect. So should we have known that at the time? I don't know, right? As a counselor, and I would put this to anybody, you can only make a decision based off the information you have. I am not a building designer. I am not an engineer. I am not an architect. I'm not any of those. And so I have to depend on the information that's given to me. Secondly, what really irritated me is we need to get that hotel out of the ground. We need to get that old building off the site, get the convention hotel built, get the folks from downtown in that courthouse, in the police court's building, and get them moved to the new facility. We need to move our officers out of Mingo Valley, right? If anybody knows where Mingo, Alina certainly does, off 11th and 169. That was an old grocery store. And I got to tell you, that's like going into one of the worst, it feels like a jail. So when you go into the division commander's office, you're like, this is how we treat, you know, our officers? And so I said, these folks need to be moved to that new public safety center. This will change some of the policing dynamics in East Tulsa. And so I'm kind of digressing, but I'm really going to get to, I'm really going to get to the point. What's that?
It would change the dynamics in East Tulsa if we moved...
Correct, the policing dynamics. So let me explain, let me explain. So because Mingo Valley supports 7, 3, 5, and 6, right? That would mean that right now where it's situated, they're actually in District 5. So that means they have to go this way, right? In order to police the entire area that they cover, right? Now, when I put it out here in East Tulsa, right, at the new public safety center, now they're all going one direction, right? And so now your policing is going one direction. They have access to, quick access to a network of highways. And so geographically, financially, even with the increase in need of funding of potentially, and I will be honest with you, I heard numbers from $5 million to $28 million. So there is now a working group, which I am now part of, as part of that public safety center improvement. I will tell you, I also sat, hang on one second, Alina, and I'll get to you. I did sit, and I didn't have to be part of this, and this is really what I'm trying to, the meat of this, when I talked about the relationships. Because I'm a rational and logical and common sense person, Counselor Dexter Wright, whose district this legitimately sits in, invited me to the table in the discussion about the rezoning and how this property would be used. She didn't have to invite me. She could have just unilaterally did it by herself, but she understood that because we had such a good working relationship, she invited me to the table to participate in that. So that's one aspect of that. So anyway, what I was basically trying to say is, between that $5 million and $28 million, I want to know what the true number is so that we can state that distinctly to the citizens so they know what it really is. And that's really what we're going to be doing on that working group is that we can express to you specifically what it's going to cost to get in there. Because like I said, this was sold as a turnkey. There was just going to be a few internal engineering changes that need to be made and everybody would just move in, right?
Where is that building?
It's at 51st and Highway 51.
It's the old Allstate.
Yep, it's the old, it's the old State Farm headquarters.
Old building, yeah.
Yep, yep. Yes, ma'am?
So what are we, we're saying that at the time that building was acquired, we did not know when the decision was made to acquire it, that there were coding improvements that needed to be done?
Correct. So when we came and, and when we had this debate over the support of IOT 3, right, that wasn't even in part of the discussion.
Some of these are federal requirements.
It was just, yeah.
They're federal requirements.
Yeah, exactly, Bob.
That's the problem.
Yep.
So in future endeavors?
Right.
Will they be making that a standard procedure and process before decisions are made?
Right. And that's what I said is, Bob would be a guy, if he was part of that process, maybe he would know to ask those questions, right? What additional code investments do we have to make to bring this up to code for this specific designation?
Well, I would think they would have procedures, you know?
Right, but I'm not part of that.
Well, I know you're not, but I mean, the standard process is to follow.
Exactly.
Historically.
Put in barriers, all these different things have to be put in. And I told GT, when he was buying this, that you better be careful because it's going to cost you a ton of money.
Well, what I will say, and that's what I want to get back to, so even if we look at the disparity between the number of $5 million and $28 million, it's still far less than what it would cost us to build this building brand-new. And so really, I am a little irritated in that aspect. But what I will say is, I understand human error. I've had some other projects sitting on other boards where you've seen people do what I would consider common sense, but they failed to do that specific due diligence. And so projects end up costing a little more, not anything to do with the city, but there are some projects that end up costing a little more than what they anticipated because they didn't look at specific things that they probably should have. Yes, sir?
The building's a bargain.
It is.
Absolutely, hands down.
Yep. Even if we had to spend the full $28 million, it's still a bargain. Yep, 10 times, it would cost us 10 times to build that building. Yes, sir?
Is the city going to get a contractor to make the determination that it needs these upgrades and what kind of upgrades it needs and...
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, about that working group. So we'll be able to ask those questions. And we'll be able to get in, that's what these working, and that's the other thing that I want to explain about working groups. Working groups are created by usually four counselors. So I'm on, if you saw the special meeting that we had last Friday, I worked on almost all of those working groups except for one. Working groups allow counselors to get into the weeds of issues. You can't have all nine counselors in the weeds on every single subject. It's just ridiculous to even think you could. You could never get through anything. You would maybe only get one or two things done because you're focused on these things. One of the working groups that I'm on is called the Pre-Hospital Working Group. Anybody heard of that? How many, how many people are satisfied with Emsa?
We try not to use them.
Okay. So here's, here's the reason why I say that. So before I got into office, apparently a couple of years before, they had to re-approve the trust, right? And apparently they only had a short period, kind of like this tax increase. You only had a shorter period of time to review the trust and then approve it. So basically, what ended up happening is they approved something that they fully didn't support or maybe didn't fully understand. So Counselor Dexter Wright, again, this is how relationships work, invited me to be part of that. So it does create this non-partisan view of an issue. And so I've spent the last two years on this working group. Counselor Q was on it previously before she left office and a couple of other counselors. But what we're really doing is we're asking a third party to look at our 911 system and our EMS system. From the time Laura calls 911, what happens? Are we doing things the right way? I think sometimes you'll see in the news, like you've seen fire captains retired who've said, like the gentleman who he was working with got electrocuted in trimming a tree. Anybody remember that story? And the captain came up there and said, you know, I called 911 and this, I didn't get an answer, right? That's what we're looking at. We want to take that empirical data and have a third party look at that. Get customer surveys, right? Emsa's going to report what they report based on the data they collect and the, and the surveys that they do. What we want is somebody who doesn't have a vested interest in the system to look at it so that we can confidently say, hey, we had a third party. And I will tell you, the process was really long to get through it. We had 11 applicants to an RFP. We only budgeted $150,000 for it, which I thought was a little low, but you know, people who'd been doing this a little longer than me thought it was enough money. We did select a vendor and we're working through that RFP process. If anybody knows, Donnie Teeman is the purchaser, or the director of purchasing. And so Donnie's been involved in a couple of those and helped us solve a couple of problems. And so this has been really how working groups work. And so I want people to understand, if you have questions about how things work, don't listen to somebody who doesn't know. Don't let somebody spread disinformation to you. Call your counselor or somebody you trust in the, in council and ask them directly. Don't listen to all this garbage that's being spread across social media.
Does everybody know what RFP is?
Oh, sorry, Request for Proposals. So you had, we had 11 responses to that Request for Proposal. And all of us had to go through the process of creating a rubric, right? And then scoring them individually, collecting all those scores, and then deciding on a vendor and interviewing them. Yeah, it was, it's quite a challenge.
Was this a national RFP sent out nationally or was it more regional, local? How far out did it go to get 11 responses?
Okay, that's a Donnie Teeman question. That's not a Christian Bingle question.
Yeah, that's right. Satter can answer all your questions.
Yeah, that's a Donnie Teeman question.
I think they get published.
They do.
And any of those that want to respond can respond from whatever area.
Yeah, I'm just not sure what platforms they put it on for, for those RFPs.
Christian, I was just reading about the uninsured motorist thing, is that a county or city issue that's going on? Who's paying for the ambulance and all that stuff?
What do you mean then, Donna?
I read an article today, I think, I don't, where I saw it, but anyway, where there's a, you get hit by an uninsured motorist, and you have to get an ambulance, who pays for that ambulance? And they said it was either city or county was picking it up.
Oh, it's the fire department.
Fire department.
Yeah, it's the fire department, yeah, I just read that too.
So is that a city or county issue?
Well, if it's the fire department, that's a city issue. And that's a, and that's something that we would have to discuss with Chief Baker, who implemented that policy. Because that's, obviously, and I will tell you, as I'm doing this, so Donna, since you brought up EMSA, or you brought up, you know, the ambulance thing, you've seen that some folks is separated from EMSA, right? I want people to understand, we're a beneficiary city, so even if you don't like EMSA, and you want us to do what Broken Arrow's doing, there's a cost, and I mean a huge cost. You're going to have to create your own ambulance service. I'm going to tell you, all the assets that they have here in Tulsa, you lose every one of those. So now you have to buy ambulances. There's a huge cost that's going to come with disassociating or disestablishing that trust.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, hey, so how you doing? Good, it's been a while.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I was just thinking, when I saw you, I was thinking about when I won.
Yeah, I was on your team.
Yep.
So, hey, so here's the big question that we really got to talk about, I think, is what's happening now with the 15-minute cities, with the flock cameras, and all this total surveillance, that, you know, it's going to be going on worldwide, they're already doing it in Australia and different European nations, but I do know that they have the flock cameras, you know, in Tulsa, and then with the United Nations' Agenda 21, Agenda 2030, it's all about stack and pack into 15-minute cities. So the question is, do we have, are we?
Define 15-minute cities.
That means that you are within, and I don't know if this is downtown, or if they're going to build, but, you know, where these high-rises are, they just want to put everybody in. So you're telling me you don't know about this? You don't know about Agenda 21, Agenda 2030?
No, I want to know what's your definition of a 15-minute, because I'm going to answer your question.
Well, I just want to find out what they're, what they are going to do with a 15-minute city. What's, what is the Tulsa City Council's agenda with 15-minute cities? And are they educated, you know, that's total communism. That is not freedom.
Well, I will tell you this, Laura.
Let's let him answer.
Yeah, so let me, let me answer your question. If you've seen all of the housing development and the development that's occurring, just in my district alone, because quite frankly, I have the most available space in the entire city of Tulsa, in Tulsa City proper. So we're 200 square miles. Some districts have less available space, some are doing infills, there's overlays, historic, et cetera, et cetera. I will tell you, there's only one project that I'm aware of, right, which might meet what you're kind of insinuating. So when you're talking about 15-minute cities, I'm going to tell you, I don't care where you go, everybody's talking about walkable and bikeable communities, right? So if that fits within your definition of 15-minute cities, I'm going to tell you about East Tulsa. So if you know anything, if you've ever heard the term, the name Robson, or Fair Oaks, right? Yeah, or Walmart, thank you. I didn't want to make that association, and the reason why, there's two reasons why. First off, I know these folks, and I know people have their opinions of these folks, right? But it's a little different, and I, like I said, it's a, you have a differing opinion when you're on the outside than when you're on the inside, and you meet folks and you see what they're trying to do. One of the developments that his son Davis is doing at 41st and 145th, is a really good development. It's unique to East Tulsa, it's a mixed with development, and this is the kind of stuff that I want to see. It has different price points and things of that nature. So to get to your question, Laura specifically, if you understand Fair Oaks was annexed into the city of Tulsa in 2001, quite frankly, Tulsa has way outgrown its ability to maintain its liabilities. That's a fact. So we have more streets than we can fund. So the Fair Oaks development is kind of a long-term development, it's going to take about 30 or 40 years. And if you're paying attention to what's going on, this will create a quote-unquote "walkable, bikeable" community. It's not intended to disestablish the rest of the city, where people are growing, because I can tell you right now, as the representative of East Tulsa, I am challenged. And I will tell you how I'm challenged. Bob, you sit on the IDAB, right?
I do.
Okay.
It means afternoon.
Yep, and I'm going to tell you, one of the biggest challenges I have in
Explain your initials, IDAB?
Yep.
Infrastructure
Development Advisory Board.
It's a board that oversees all the permitting and development within the city.
So I'm going to tell you.
Citizen board.
Yep, so I'm going to tell you something, the biggest obstacle that I have in East Tulsa is infrastructure, right? All the way back to GT, and even, even back to, what was that guy's name?
Bartlett.
Even back to Dewey, they've always stated that East Tulsa is a strategic growth area, but they never made the investments, right? They never made the investment of infrastructure. They never did anything to actually promote that growth. And I'm going to tell you, it's a huge challenge to create additional growth. There is nobody, I don't care about the conspirators who claim people are out here trying to snatch their land from the city's point of view, I have no intent of taking anybody's land. If a person in my district owns a piece of property that's 20 acres, and they want to keep it agriculture, I will support them 100%, right? As long as they don't sell that property.
Can they sell it to China, though? That's what's happening.
I don't determine, I have no, I have no part of that. That's not under my purview.
That was already passed by the state of Oklahoma, and you can't go to
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think they're already, oh, land that's Oh, I
But they're, they're going to start working, they're working on getting that taken care of, yes.
Laura, there's a lot of hurdles that have to be overcome in a lot of this stuff.
But my question is, are you not aware of the 15-minute city plan?
Right, but that's what I'm trying to get to. So in the Fair Oaks Development Plan, it's the intent to create a walkable, bikeable community, where the amenities that currently don't exist in East Tulsa will actually start growing. And it's so that you don't have to clog up your streets by having potential work, play, and, you know, recreate, all in the same area, right? And that's kind of the thing. If you understand the Fair Oaks Master Development Plan, it is, it is what people want today. It's what our next generation, we think, most often, us as older citizens, we think with our own set of eyes, and we think with our own set of values. We have to understand, we're not developing for our future, right? Our youth is gone, and we're like at the back nine, right? And so we have to think about what our youth want, and what our next future leaders are going to, what we're going to hand them, what they want to see the city look like for them. And so when we're talking about 15-minute cities, if you're talking about that specific growth pattern, that is a landowner who is willing to make that development, that benefits not only him, right? Because he does benefit from it financially, the land broker benefits from it, the development benefits from it, and I'm going to tell you, it's a challenge as a counselor, because I understand there's some trepidation about folks that have decided to buy property and want to maintain the rural setting in an incorporated city. I told people, those days are over, right? So you better be prepared, and you better understand, I understand the challenges of my district.
Are you talking about no chickens, or something like that?
No, 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 what I just said, if you heard what I just said, if you want to keep your, if you own the property, and you want to keep it as agriculture, agriculture, or AGR, meaning you can do husbandry on your property and live on the property and build a home, I will support that 100%. That's my job, because you're the property owner. What I do want to do, because we haven't made those infrastructure improvements to foster growth in East Tulsa, as we claimed, now I'm presented with the challenge, and this is going to all tie back into the tax increase. The challenge that I face as a city councilor in my district is, I represent the most diverse district in East, in the entire city of Tulsa. I am a minority in my own district, believe it or not. That wasn't that way 30 years ago, right? If, you know that. So, I mean, that's the challenge that I live with today, and that's the reality. So I can't fight what I have, what, I can't create what I want, I have to deal with what I have. And one of the challenges is that when developers are coming to me, they're asking me for high-density developments. Well, the problem is, is the folks in my area, in those areas where they're wanting to do this development, they're not spending their money in Tulsa. All that money's going to Katusa. Do you not think that Katusa built that retail corridor so they could take our tax dollars? Right? There's a proposal that I threw out on the table about the imposition of impact fees on developers. That's going to be highly controversial, but when we're talking about taxes, right? We need to have turned over every cushion that we could potentially
That's exactly right.
Look at in alternative revenues, resources, because these developers are developing, doing high-density developments, they're putting impact on our infrastructure, they've made their money off of their development, and off they go. Most of these developers don't even live in the city of Tulsa, so they're not living with the problems that they create. So what I'm telling you is, is that some of the things that you're hearing about 15-minute cities, that's not what I see.
Well, that's what I wanted to know, if this was something within the council.
Yeah, yeah, that is not something, yeah, because you don't see, you don't see opposition to growth, right? And you don't see opposition to development. The two things that are obvious to everybody, is we hear this over and over, we need 13,000 or 12,900 units out of the ground in the next decade, right? We have a housing shortage. And I'm going to tell you, from Chris's standpoint, we keep saying that the population is dropping, right? Younger people aren't having children like we did, right? And so I'm like, why is there a housing shortage if we're, if the population isn't growing? Why is there a housing shortage?
They can't afford to buy any.
Just like I, no, I'm, no, I'm not, what I'm meaning is, is they're basically saying there's no supply. And I will tell you, my district is the highest-growing district in the entire city of Tulsa. But I have to be smart and conservative, and understand the liabilities by putting more housing, putting more impact. It's my job as a councilor of that district, where everybody's gluttonously looking at building things, and saying, hey, you're not creating an asset, you're just adding to the liabilities, because there's no place for anybody to spend their money to buy groceries, right? So I have to understand what I'm, what I'm doing, and be smart about how we control conservative growth versus hypergrowth.
Do you coordinate with economic development, and also like the TIF districts and the finance districts, in these areas where you perceive a problem, you know, about that type of development?
You're talking about, okay, so let's talk about, let's
Could I repeat it, because it may not have gotten
Yeah, so when we're talking about, you were talking about using incentives to promote growth, or right, or to attract developments.
I mean, coordination there, so it won't be a use to get the ill effect that you
It is, and so that's really what I've been doing. So if any of you remember my predecessor, she loved talking about how she got the first TIF in our district. Well, if anybody understands that TIF, it was TIF District Number 7. TIF District Number 7 was created to actually build the Jinx Outlet Mall, right? Obviously, Jinx offered a better TIF than we did, and so they got that. And so that TIF has basically sat vacant and
Was it TIF?
Yep, it was a TIF.
What is it?
Oh, sorry, Tax Increment Financing. So basically, what you're using is, you're using sales tax to help fund that development, either on the front end or the back end, right? And so basically, what you're doing is you're encouraging someone to come in and develop. Now, you're only supposed to use these, or these incentives, right? There's a state law requirement and a process that you have to follow, right? In order to use these incentives, right? So they are regulated by the state. And so you go through that process. But what I will tell you is that the first part of Fair Oaks, I just went through this, and as soon as I get this out of my mouth, I know I'm going to hear all kinds of craziness. This is Project Anthem, which is the data center, right? This is the first bite of the Fair Oaks development.
Where is that located?
11th and
11th and Creek
Creek Turnpike, that's right, I was trying to think. So I was the first bite at the table as a data center. Now, I'll tell you, I don't create the TIDs, I don't negotiate the TIDs, that's Theo's responsibility. There's a guy named Mike Dickerson, who does all that negotiating to get those TIFs and TIDs. So let me explain the TID. So TID is back, basically, Tax Increment Deferrment. So basically, what you're basically doing is you're saying, I'm going to defer X amount of your taxes for X amount of years. So the furthest you go is 25 years, that's the max. So Project Anthem is the first data center in the entire city, excluding Project Clydesdale. And as I told Commissioner Salee, I said, you guys really put me on the hot seat when you approved that data center, because now you have everybody coming out of the woodwork, you know, creating all this speculation about eco-challenges, right? And as I told people, right, but we brought people to the table, right, the experts, right? I'm not a hydrologist, I don't do any of these things, and what I need people to remember is, I don't make this decision on my own. And what that means is, is that process that I talked about, when you use a TIF, you have what is called an L-Dark process. That's a Local Development Action Review Committee. And what that is, is that every taxing entity that would benefit from that development, right, has to meet and has to agree on everything. Meaning, they're going to support that development, and they're pushing that out forward for approval by the council, and moving forward with that specific project. We went through that project with Project Anthem. Now, I got relatively unscathed through that process, because it was the first data center. Project Clydesdale's come on, and now it's really ramped up, and now it's really on people's radar about data centers. Do I think it's a sustainable thing? Of course not. And when I had a former opponent of mine, Cheyenne Morgan, reach out to me about it, I said, I'm not aware of any appetite for any more, right? But what I will say is, that is not my district over there. I can only worry about what's on my plate, right? So those folks will have to answer over there, can we support two data centers, right? And that's what the commissioners have to understand, that's what that counselor will have to explain, that's what that company will have to explain. Is it an open or closed-loop cooling system, right? Are they injecting chemicals to prevent corrosion? Is that being injected back into the system? And what potential pollutants are in that water? So I need people to understand, there's a lot to this process. And so there's a lot of regulation in using it, but I will say, there are some uses of TIFs that I don't agree with, because the intent of TIFs is for you to incentivize someone to come in and develop in a place where it wouldn't normally develop on its own organically. And I tell people, I say, if we would get, if we would get the dam dam done in the south, right, the South Tulsa Jinx Dam, we may not have had to do TIFs in certain areas. That area That area will grow organically after that low-water project dam is done. You can bank on that. In fact, that whole corridor will just continue to populate and generate. David?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
I can hear David.
I can hear him.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So my problem with everything that you've been talking about with TIFs and data centers, water usage, power, is it all comes at a cost to the taxpayer.
Right.
And so we're extorted for these people to grow. We're, we're on the hook, and we get no return. Supposedly, there's something, but it's illegal from a constitutional perspective. And my question is, we're not going to stop TIFs, we're not going to stop the data center, but are they getting their, are they getting a discount on electricity while we're going to have to pay for another, another power station?
No, they're charged the commercial rates, right?
And water and so forth.
Right, exactly. They're not charged the same as a resident, right? And so people need to understand that. They're going to pay their fair share on their tax of our, of our resources, right? What I would also say, this is the crappy part of this development, and I will just say that out front. I don't like big developments simply because I worked at WorldCom, right? And if you know where WorldCom is, it's the Cherokee Industrial Complex. That building's now sitting there empty, right? And so that's what I always visualize when we talk about big developments. But I will say, on the back end, or the second part of this, is another project called King Break. And I will tell you, even though Project Anthem, right, is not a huge job creator, it's a huge economic boost in the build-out, right? Construction, all the skilled workforce will hugely make money off of this. And so people will be employed, it'll have a huge economic impact. That's one thing. Now, Project King Break, let me finish.
Wait, hang on, why don't you finish?
Project King Break, which would be the second portion of this Fair Oaks development, is a job generator. It will actually help support the data center in what it manufactures. So I want you to understand, the first bite is really the crap part of the sandwich. But the second part will actually create jobs for Tulsans.
Could that answer your question?
In a huge way.
So you said it would make the impact on the build-out, but once that's done, is there any money going back into the community after they've built out?
Yes, right. You'll pay, they'll pay taxes. Now, their, their taxes are deferred at 85% for 25 years. Yeah, this, yeah, and I, and I told you guys, as soon as I said, talked about this, this was, this was going to be an issue, right? And I totally grasp that. But I, but here's the thing, what I will remind you guys is, you get nothing but ad valorem without development, period. And that's all you ever collect every year. If you don't create these TIFs and TIDs, and you don't use them appropriately, you get no development, right? And really, we're about trying to grow our city and about generating revenue so we can fix the streets. Put sidewalks where people need sidewalks and want sidewalks. We have projects that we can't fund because we don't have the revenue. I will give you another thing when we're talking about revenue.
And then Bob has a question.
Sure.
I've got five questions.
Oh, geez. Let me get my seat.
I have three, I only asked one.
Okay, so here's the thing. I did, I had HR pull, how many, how many of our city workers actually live in the city limits of Tulsa? There's a very few amount out of the 3,500 that live in the city of Tulsa. So I want people to think about, and I'm not blaming the city workers by any means. And so I don't want anybody to take that out of what I'm saying. But as a city, that's money that leaves our city every two weeks when we pay.
That's true, of the area, of all the industrial parks.
Just city of Tulsa employees.
But the equivalent in the, in the private sector, people come in here to work, and then they go.
They take it right back out to another community. And so we're not, these communities aren't growing on their own fat, they're growing off us. And I need people to understand that. So when you hear our neighbors in Broken Arrow, Bixby, or anywhere else talk about, you know, Tulsa, right, in a diminutive way, remember, a lot of the problems that they have, like homelessness, they have those issues, but guess where they're sending them? They're sending them here. This is not a Tulsa problem, this is a metropolitan, these are metropolitan problems. And so, as I've said, we need to be out here having these conversations with Broken Arrow, with Bixby, and those folks, and they need to contribute their fair share to this problem. We shouldn't just be trying to take on things ourselves. We need to be thoughtful and understanding about the Tulsa taxpayers whose back some of this stuff is paid for.
Okay, first of all, who listened to the mayor's State of the City address last night?
I did. I was there.
You were there because he called you out.
He did.
Pretty, pretty, pretty interesting. I've got a couple, I've got three questions for you. Number one, talking to an ex-police guy this morning, and he says that the police, they're retiring faster than they're bringing new recruits. That they're going backwards, they're not going forwards because the city won't change the procedure.
What procedure?
College education.
Oh my God, you, I can't believe you brought this up. I have stumped on this.
And I have stumped on this, and your police chief and I got into a fight one day over this.
I've actually had this conversation with Commissioner Roberts, I've had this discussion with Chief Larson, I had this discussion with Mayor Bynum. I have talked about this until I'm blue in the face. When we went on the trip to Salt Lake, and I'll let you bash me about going on these intercity visits, but I think you need to understand.
No, I've gone on them, they're good, they're good.
They're very educational.
I've been on two of them.
What Salt Lake, when, I don't remember if it was Commissioner Roberts who asked this question, but somebody asked the police chief of Salt Lake if they had an education requirement, and he almost scoffed at it, is what I remember his reaction to be. And I've told Commissioner Roberts, I've told the, all, both mayors that I've served under, and all the chiefs that have been here that I've served, that I've, that have been here since I've been in office, I said, look, I'm okay if you require a bachelor's degree for specialized policing, for detective, for administrative. I feel like you do need some education. But I said, for the normal street cop, I said, look at me as your paradigm of hope. I'm the biggest idiot there is without a college degree, and I was a deputy for 17 years. Not once did I ever create any kind of liability to the sheriff's office. My name isn't anywhere where I've done anything wrong, discriminated, or used inappropriate use of force. But you have people with a college degree who you as citizens are now having to pay liability for because of their own behaviors. You might even have seen that we had to make a really tough decision. And while we're on your subject real quick, I just want to make sure you're aware of this. If you didn't see, as a council, we had to approve a $26.250 million settlement. And I want to tell you, this is what happened 30 years ago that we're dealing with today. And I want to tell you, there was no upside to this. In fact, if this really would have went to a trial, if you read the article from the lawyer, or you read the snippet from the lawyer's quote, that literally could have been huge and devastating to the city of Tulsa. So we were lucky that they were willing to settle. And I, and I can't divulge, you know, some of this stuff, but I will tell you, it would have been horrible for us as a city. And it's our job to mitigate that liability as much as we can, and I feel like we did a good job.
All I'm saying, something's got to change.
It does, and I'm totally in agreement. And I've been stumping that publicly amongst my colleagues, the mayor.
For years, so.
They're just not willing to do it.
That's item number one.
How do you think they're not willing?
Who wants to be the first chief to get rid of the education requirement that somebody else created as a standard?
He says, he says, college-educated people know the Constitution better. That was his, that was his, that was his answer to me, okay, all right. That was his answer to me. Chief, the chief, police chief, the police, the current police chief, all right, number two.
Good grief, Dennis never said that to me.
All right, number two, the growth in the mayor's office. The growth in the mayor's office, we were given a, our IDAB board was given, because Gene Bullmash and his little nonsense, little pony show comes down to our meeting all the time, he came down again today, gives us this chart of a chart, this organizational chart of the mayor's office, and it's really, you got that much going on at the mayor's office? It's out of control, and he's paying all these people big money, and now he wants a tax increase. So you got to look at under the cushions.
Yep.
Because he's growing, he's growing the bureaucracy.
And I, the mayor and I have had that conversation, and I told him, I said, I'm a little challenged, after we went through, you know, getting a budget that we could come to a consensus to. In contrast, we had the struggle of whether we were going to fund Freedom Fest at $50,000 and whether we were going to fund the early settlement program that the city, the county, and the state were all agreed to pay into. I did tell the commissioners that in the future, for next year's budget, when we get into that cycle, that the county or the municipalities in the county should, they should start soliciting for a proportional share of that, right? The problem, and this is public information, so I'm not saying anything to smear the mayor, it's not my job, and I won't do that. I won't smear any of my colleagues, I won't smear the mayor publicly, that's not my job. What I am going to speak to is fact. Now, Mike Miller, and this isn't about Mike Miller, right? So I want to make that very clear, this isn't about Mike Miller, this is about a position, this is about a hire, this is about a decision the mayor made himself, right? He hired a city administrator, right? And after we would, had went through the discussion of the budget and agreed upon the $1.1 billion budget, which I'm sure is challenging to all Tulsans, the mayor had that administrator's position transferred to the civil service, which now falls into the general fund, right? So this was outside our budget discussion, that's problematic. Then you have another $275,000 that was spent to create a mayor's office of youth and family services, or children's and families. That's $275,000. You have.
The Indian, they hired a Native American.
Are you talking about Amanda Swop? Yeah, who's the tribal affairs advisor. This is the thing about, you know, mayors and their budgets. They're budgeted for 14 positions, right? How they use those, and as long as they operate within the budgets, I don't have oversight over that. So when we go through the budget discussion, right? The mayor actually submits the budget to the council. We get time to review it, which is, yeah, quite frankly, it is a short amount of time between April, when we get it, and, and to the point of June 30th, or around that period when we have to adopt it, right? So that we can start spending that money on July 1st. The challenge for me is, is that when you go to the table, and you go to the citizens and say, hey, I need a tax increase, right? What you have to do is you have to show, I'm living hand to mouth, right? I've done everything that I can to cut the budget, I've done everything I can fiscally to show that I'm in desperate need of this money, right? And maybe it's not a seven-tenths of a percent, maybe it's three-tenths of a percent. I think you really need to understand that what you're showing, the public does not show you need the money. And that's where I think most folks who are paying attention have problems with a tax increase. So I want you to know, as a council, as a collective, we're very aware of that.
Okay, all right, next item. There's a, so, yeah, I know you don't read social media, but I do, I watch it.
Well, you're going to have to inform me then.
Okay, so there's a post out there that says, this afternoon, Mayor Nick, Mayor Monroe calls a giant meeting of city employees. Are you aware of any meeting today?
No.
It says, sorry, guys, no one gets their annual raise because we got to use the dollars to pay for housing in the homeless program. This came from a city employee.
And there's immigration position that's been out.
So my question is, are city employees not getting their raise, their raises that they were supposed to get?
Okay, what raise are you talking about?
I'm just saying that.
I'm going to tell you what we agreed to as a consensus as part of the budget.
Wasn't there like a 3%?
1% stipend. It was not a raise, it was a 1% stipend.
So, okay, so I know how to discount that, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to tell you, the mayor, when he was talking about the tax increase, he was talking about the increase for police and fire. Now, all I heard when I came into office is, we gave historic raises. Now, I don't understand, I don't know how much police officers are paid, I don't know how much firefighters are paid, I don't know, I'm not part of the discussions with their, with their unions, so I don't know what the structure of their contracts look like with the city. What I will say is, just as I explained just a minute ago, these folks do work for the city of Tulsa, but they do take those monies out of the city. And so I do value our employees, they do a lot. And I will tell you, as a councilor, I've had good results in getting folks to do things that we need to do on behalf of the citizens. Am I challenged that we have so many people living outside the city of Tulsa? Hell, yes, I am. Because I don't feel like you have an investment other than you're getting a paycheck.
Well, I think people need to understand, if you take the, the agreement with the firemen and the agreement with the police and look at that package part of the entire budget, it's a, it's a very large portion of the budget.
It is, public safety is always going to be the biggest part of your budget.
It is huge, it is.
Well, since the departments have merged, I think public works, I think, is bigger, if I remember correctly. If we look at the two buckets because of how the city was restructured. So, like I said, the citizen, the employees of Tulsa are great employees, and they do do a great job. How long has it been since they've been had a raise? I don't know. But are they deserving of it? Yes, I totally agree. The non-sworn folks, I don't sit.
The non-sworn.
Yeah, I don't know anything about the police and fire and their contracts and those negotiations, so I can't speak to those.
Laura, and then Laura, and then Alina, and then we're going to wrap it up, okay?
All right, wrap it up.
All right, so, so you're saying you've not heard anything about the 15-minute cities, and?
No, I know what you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So as far as you know, so what do you know about the plan for the 15-minute?
I don't know anything. We've already established that, Laura.
So you don't know anything about it? Okay, so now what about Kaiser? Okay, do you feel that, I mean, he's a massive.
He's rich.
He's, he owns it all, right? And so is he pretty much in control of all this?
Let's make sure we put people in the right context. So I want people to understand, even though you may have your own personal opinions of an individual who's very wealthy and affluent. No, I'm just saying, I know this is an opinion that a lot of people share, right? So I want to dispel, I've never met George Kaiser personally, I don't know anybody from the Kaiser family. Well, I take that back, I know one person, Cynthia Hasso. And I know, is he, he doesn't work for Kaiser, does he?
Gene is George's.
Oh, yeah, well, I don't, yeah, well, I, I just know Gene through the capacity that he serves. And then I know Lakin, right? Exactly. So I, those are the few people that, what I will say is, there's some huge investments that that, that George Kaiser has made to this community. And one of them is obviously the Gathering Place, right? That is huge. What would that have cost us as a city if we had to develop that, right? We'd have had to done it on a capital bond package, right? And so I want to be careful about how we frame folks. I don't know the man personally, so I'm not speaking ill of him, and I'm not speaking good because I don't know him. But make sure we frame, talk nicely about people. But I will answer your question.
Well, that, I mean, in other words, I just wanted to know.
Well, that, I mean, in other words, I just wanted to know, from your perspective, what the control he has over Tulsa.
I don't know the man.
He's a multimillionaire, I'm sure, and I really, I've not even looked into it too. This is just something that I just started thinking about lately, cuz, I mean, he is one of the richest people here in Tulsa, and he does.
I worry about Kathy Taylor more than about George Kaiser.
Okay, let's, let's go to Alina, and then we're gonna wrap it up.
So, talking about East Tulsa, you live in East Tulsa, I live in East Tulsa.
Sure.
And we talked about the police department, and so I'm wondering, what do you think about this, if there is a strain, or what kind of a strain is the migrant community putting on East Tulsa?
Are you talking about illegal immigrants? Is that what you're literally focused on? I will tell you, I don't know what the demographic is. And while we're on that subject, right, we can go back when my colleague, former colleague, Counselor Fowler, proposed the Safe City ordinance. Who remembers that?
Yep.
Right? And I tried to tell my friend Jamie that it wasn't a good idea. I couldn't support it because of who I represent, right? I just explained to you earlier that I have the most diverse district in the entire city. How can I support something that goes against my own community that I'm representing, right? What I will say is, as I said previously, when we were talking about that specific ordinance, I told Jamie, I said, first off, you're never gonna get that policy passed, right, because the mayor has to implement that policy, right? Which means the police chief has to implement that policy of targeting specific individuals, right? If we just listen to what I talked about, what, first off, targeting should never be used. So, now we're looking at people from the outside wrapper, right, which we should never do. And we could potentially put people in a situation where the city pays out another $26.25 million. We don't need to do that kinda stuff. And as I told Jamie, I said, you have federal immigration laws, right? So, the, the federal government has responsibility for protection of our borders. So, you've already passed that layer of government. Now, they've entered into the state of Oklahoma, right? Which is the next layer of government. So, if the state isn't controlling it, what am I gonna do? Right? You've already passed two layers of government that have more authority than I do as a municipality. All I administer, or, you know, basically serve, is that 200 square miles I just talked about. The state has more authority over the entire state and can make laws that I cannot. All I can do is adopt state law, or make, put, make things more stricter. But I can tell you, it is not my job, I don't want to even go down that road of where we start targeting people in the city of Tulsa. Because if we do make bad decisions, we could end up having to pay for it, one way or the other. And you don't wanna do that anyway, right? Because it's kinda like, when we went through COVID and people started targeting the Asian community, right? You just don't wanna go through that process.
My question though is, and I, I.
I don't know what the impacts are.
Okay, so.
Yeah. So, that's why I'm saying, if you're asking me, if you were trying to ask me what that population number looks like, I don't know that.
But I don't, I don't understand government-supporting law-breaking.
Well, and I've said this as well.
That's in my craw.
Well, and that's kinda the thing. So, if you hear people talk about it, right, they'll say, "This is like running a red light." And I said, "Okay, well, let's put this in terms of our citizens," right? So, if you're an illegal immigrant, and this is, you've basically run a red light, right? There's, and you do it day after day after day, there's no penalty. But you, as a citizen, if you're a citizen, you have a driver's license, you have insurance, you run red lights, and you get pulled over by a cop, guess where you're going? You're going to the municipal court to either pay your court ticket, or you're gonna challenge it, or whatever the case may be. But you can't run a red light every, at one time and say, "Hey, I already got my citation, I've got free rein to run red lights for the rest of my life." That's the comparison and analogy that I try and get people to understand when we talk about this specific issue. A lot of folks look at it from more of an economic impact view. And I think some of us may understand that the state has even proposed potentially about giving folks driver's license, allowing them to vote, all kinds of things. And that didn't come from the city council, that came from the state. And this was all based upon economic impact. Now, I will tell you, I serve my country, and I don't support people coming into my country that were not invited here. I understand, I will tell you one way that I don't necessarily take issue, but it's kind of basically being a little bit contradictory, and I'll explain. So, if, let's just say for the sake of argument that Laura's illegal. And she has a grandmother who lives in another country, who's sickly, and has nobody over there in her country to take care of her. But Laura has the means and ways of taking care of her. She's not gonna, grandma's not gonna qualify for any kind of social benefits of any kind, it's all gonna fall on Laura to take care of her, right?
Is Laura legal?
Oh, no, Laura's legal, I'm sorry, I meant her, I meant her grandmother. She has to take care of her grandmother. That's what I was, sorry, I'm, forgive me. Laura's basically gonna take care of her sickly grandmother because grandma has nobody else to take care of her. That's just the humane aspect. So, it seems a bit contradictory, but I know some of those situations do exist within my community. So, I know these folks aren't going to benefit from Social Security or any of those things. Those families are taking care of that. I think the issue that most people in our district have is multifamily occupation.
25 people in a one-bedroom apartment?
Yeah. So, the problem is, is that there's some cultural behaviors that come with having immigrants in our community. There are things that they are allowed and acceptable social behaviors that they bring with them. And, and a lot of times, you'll find that most of it is they just don't know any better. And that's just not acceptable. And so, most times, you can have those conversations, say, "Hey, I understand you like to park your car on the lawn, you know, just so you can roll out of the truck into the front door, but that's not allowed here." And so, there are some of those conversations that you do have to have. It's be just cultural misunderstanding. So, failing to assimilate to American society.
He's got one more question for you.
You already said.
I know, but you're, I have to commend the city of Tulsa, because the mayor came and took questions for an hour and a half, Chris has done the same thing, and I, it's so enjoyable to be able to have a conversation and get a better understanding of your perspective. Because all we see is what we, is what we see, or what we hear, and, and so, we don't know. So, I appreciate this very much.
And I wanna tell you, I am open, I am honest, I speak very frankly, I'm not a politician, if you haven't figured that out. I, I would rather deal with the truth than deal with a lie, after telling you a lie and then having to deal with the fallout. So, I'm gonna tell you exactly what's going on, or what I've seen.
Thank you for a very wide-ranging presentation tonight. If I may respectfully say, can we come back to the original question from which you came?
Yeah, tax.
Could you summarize and clinch for us where this stands? What is the likelihood that it's gonna rear its head in some other disguise?
It will, it will bring.
And how do we, how do we prepare to defeat it? And my only injected comment, as, as just a mere citizen, is why don't these governments behave more like families who say, "We have X dollars this year, and if we wanna do some new initiative, that means we gotta shut something else down, or budget differently," instead of going out and saying, "The only answer for this is to increase sales taxes to the extent that I would actually think about moving to a nearby area just on the basis of a lower sales tax rate."
But if you saw the, if you saw the comparisons, right, that the mayor showed, what surrounding communities and other communities are taxing at, that's really what he's kind of implying, is that based on a city or size, we're not taxing at the rate we should. But, at the same time.
That's an unbelievable statement, at the rate we should.
Yeah.
Is this come from heaven?
Yeah. Well, maybe, I don't know. It's not my proposal. What I will say is that.
A little hierarchical thinking here, the king on the throne.
The realistic, the realistic, even though you can present, "This is what I would want to do with the money", it's an $80 million infusion to the general fund, which means it's up for grabs to all 10 of us, right? As a council. It's not bucketized like it, like the Improve Our Tulsa that we talked about earlier, right? Those are bucketized funds for specific things. So, those funds can only be used for that. As we're talking about a sales tax increase, as I talked about, we need to look at our finances realistically before we come back. We have to appear to be living hand to mouth, right? If you look at some of the sales tax and use tax, right, there's kind of fluctuations between those two, right? Use tax is where you're shopping from home, use it from Amazon, and you get charged a use tax, right? State gets part of that, and we get part of that, right? So, that's how that works. So, you're still getting some tax revenue in that regard. But your sales tax also is your biggest contributor to that. And so, 52% of the city's budget is off of sales tax, right? And so, what you really wanna do, in my opinion, is you wanna show that you've made every effort, right, just like I said earlier, that you've turned over every cushion, that you've made every cut that is necessary, cuz you certainly don't wanna cut services to Tulsans, right? That's certainly something you don't wanna do. You don't wanna cut, defund the police, right? That old saying. You don't wanna defund the police, you don't wanna cut back on your public safety. You wanna do everything to look for alternative revenue sources, like the fire department came to the table and talked about that line item that is in your insurance that most of us didn't know, that when you have an accident and you're at fault, your insurance company will pay for Tulsa Fire having come out and cleaned up the hazardous materials and stuff. And so, that doesn't increase. And I asked that question specifically, is this something that's, you know, a line item that's considered as increasing your premiums, right, year over year, right? Cuz we're all worried if we have an accident, our premiums will increase. That's an alternative revenue source that we hadn't had before. And so, we're gonna see a return on that. We did fund the front end of that for six months. The second month, or the next six months, this will end up being a wash, right? So, we'll be back at zero. And then, from there on, we'll, we'll be about 1.1 to 1.2, according to the fire department's estimates. As I talked about earlier, the imposing potentially, or exploring, impact fees, right, on developers who come out and develop, and the impacts that they're putting on our infrastructure, maybe looking at that, because other cities are doing that, right? If you're gonna talk about, hey, if you're gonna use the monkey see, monkey do mentality, if this community's doing this, so we should do it, or we should implement it, then you need to look at all the monkey see, monkey do things that other people are doing to raise revenue. The challenge, as I said before, is you're gonna have seniors who are living on fixed home, and we're all riding that silver tsunami right now, right? And so, we're all on that, if you're not already retired, you're on the preface of it, right? I think most of us know that. And so, this is going to come back up. So, what happened last night, if you didn't see it, this was brought up, and not only was this a consideration of the sales tax increase, right, of the seven tenths, but this was also a consideration of the hotel motel tax, if you saw that. Now, the hotel motel tax, you shouldn't be concerned about, cuz that's a visitor's tax, right? So, you should be okay with going to the 9.25 for visitors coming to Tulsa and spending their money and staying in our hotels. That's another alternative revenue source. It's not being taxed to you directly, cuz you're not staying in a hotel, you live in a home. So, that, you shouldn't have much issue with that. But if you do, you need to voice those, right, to your counselor, and what your concerns are. This is not going away, it is coming back. So, what happened last night is Counselor Decter Wright referred this back to committee. So, what this does is it refers it back to committee, and we start the process all over again. Which means, as we all stated collectively and as a consensus, we didn't feel like the mayor had gone through a robust enough engagement process. You can't zip line through this process and say, "Hey, you know what? Got an idea how we can fix, you know, a lot of these problems, and the way we do it is we just increase taxes. And we tax, you know, that's comparable to other communities, that are comparable to us, and actually, some that are even higher than us, believe it or not. Some of these municipalities, if you look at it comparatively, they are paying, they are charging more tax."
Wouldn't that be a selling point for getting people to come in and shop in Tulsa?
Exactly. And that's really some of the things that we're kind of falling back to, is, hey, you know, as you kinda stated earlier, is that may motivate you to shop somewhere else. This is hopefully, one of the things that draws people to shop in Tulsa, and so we can continue to see, meet our revenue targets that finance has projected, that will get these specific revenues throughout the year. And so, really, what you wanna do is you wanna keep people coming into Tulsa. You still want people to create business in Tulsa and not do it somewhere else. And so, that's a huge challenge. It's gonna come back to the table. It may come back in a different format, right? The mayor is going to have to do some public engagement. He can't put it on me to go do his public engagement. This isn't my proposal, right? So, he has to do the work, and not just try and get through the process as quickly as possible, and say, "This is how we're, how we're gonna use these funds," because that's not the reality. I'm not forced or bound, just like Planet Tulsa, I'm not bound by that document. I'm not bound by a general fund, right? We, as a collective, could say, "Okay, this is what we intend to use it for, but in the end, only this much really goes to it," right? It's not bucketized, like I said, about the capital bond.
It also doesn't go away.
Right, it's forever, it's a forever tax.
It never expires, it's a forever tax.
And as I told the mayor, he's a historic figure in our city, he's the first black mayor, right? He is a historical figure. This, the last tax increase was James Enhoff. 45 years ago is the last time the city had that discussion. This means, whether you like the previous mayors or not, this means we've been able to operate within our means.
But you've had, you've also had go-bonds, and you've.
Yeah, but that's totally different. This isn't an increase of taxes.
But that's still taxes, that's still, that's still an increase.
Right, but they're not increase of taxes, they're extensions of pre-existing taxes.
No, 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 don't even start that.
Are you talking about that?
No, 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 no.
I know how you're, I know how you're trying to convey it, Rhonda, but it's a pre, a tax that already pre-existed, that, yes, it is a new tax in the way you're trying to say it, but it's not a new tax in that I started from here and now I'm increasing it.
Right, no, I got, I got.
Right, yeah.
March 1st, 2017, it increased from 3.1 to 3.65.
Right.
Sales tax.
Yep, and that's where we've been ever since.
But that was in 17, not back in Enhoff.
That's what I'm saying, so.
So, just what is the logic that that number needs to increase, but we're already dealing with inflation, which means the products that we bought 20 years ago have adjusted to higher prices? You're still getting the same amount of tax, I can't do all the calculations. I just cannot accept this nonsense that says we're somehow obligated over time to develop by increasing the tax rate. It's ridiculous.
Well, and that's kinda the pushback is that we're giving, is we need people like you to come out.
I'm here, I'll be there.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. This is where, when those public engagements are done, right? That you show up and you mobilize as a community to come out and have your voice heard. I think if you, if any of you, if any of you have, pick up your phone right now and go do a Google search, and let AI, ask AI this question, what, how do Tulsans feel about the potential for a tax increase?
Oh, yeah.
And I'll let you see what AI tells you.
And I just wanna say, they, I just pulled it up, they just approved 27 data centers in Oklahoma, 27.
Right. But that's the, but that's always, that's been the governor's agenda.
Yeah.
And he's never been secretive about that.
No, no. And, and, but I think that people just need to, that needed to understand, or one of the things that the mayor needs to understand is that the fact that he came at this so fast. fast and furious-
Right.
It's gonna cause him to have to, he's, he's gonna have to swim harder upstream if he thinks he's gonna, if he's gonna make it. Because what it looks like, when you come in, in the middle of November, and you say, "We're gonna put this on the ballot February 10th," when we all know nobody gets out and votes hardly on February 10th, hell-
Voter turnout is low.
900 people showed up in Alina's district, you know, for her election.
Yep.
So there's a lot of distrust now. There's, there's distrust in the whole process, there's distrust in the delivery and, and the timing.
Well, and I hope the council kind of validated the concerns that the citizens have, and that we've kind of pulled back the reins on this and said, "Great, if this is the path you wanna go, right, you need to go back to the drawing board and have the engagements with the community to make sure they fully understand what you're asking of them." Because doing it in, in the way that we've been, or that he's done it, yeah, he's discussed it in committee, but how many people watch committee meetings, right? How many people attend town halls? Or how many people go to city council meetings?
Right.
Right? How many people went to the state of the city last night?
Right.
I mean, you're talking about 413,000 people that are collectively gonna be influenced or paying for this.
Don't forget there's a $600 million TPS bond, get ready to hit it.
Yes. And that's, the mayor kind of implied about his timeline.
$600 million TPS bond.
I'll be honest with you, I've been so busy with my own stuff, that's what I depend on you for.
Find the $35 million, and then we'll talk about giving you more money, but, you know.
Yep.
Okay, one last question, and then we gotta wrap.
You said one last question, like 10 questions ago.
One comment, one more comment, one more comment.
I just wanted to ask, will the, the proposed increase all go to general fund?
Yes. That's, a sales tax increase is general funding.
Yeah. Slush fund, it's a slush fund.
No.
2%, 2 cents of 3.65 in general fund only. So will that increase go to the 2% because 1.65 were the other type?
And see, that's the question you need to ask.
Okay. So those are-
And that's what I'm saying. This is where the mayor falls short in, in his proposal, is even you don't understand that as an educated voter.
Hey, Chris, one, one thing is, how much of the budget goes to social spending, roughly? If you know the number?
I wouldn't even take a stab at that, David.
Because, because that would be an easy cut, and then you don't have to raise for tax.
Are you talking about the 2% he showed on the graphic?
I don't believe that.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. Like I said-
Okay.[1739.83]